Thank you all for coming. I'm Lynn Forman. I'm the president of the NS senior center board of directors. And we hope to be doing more of this type of thing in the future. I think it's important for seniors to have the opportunity to hear what's going on with the school. And I personally believe strongly in our children are our future. And so I think to be engaged and learn is a good thing. So I'm pleased to have three candidates who are running for the board. And they will have three minutes each to speak to questions that they've been provided in his bands. And allowing time, we have some paper and pencils. If people want to write down their own questions, we will give those as well. So Marilyn Jenkins. And you have Peter Prestissi. And Justin Stone. So we will start with Marilyn. Okay. What is your vision for the future of schools, our schools? And how do you plan to address the unique challenges faced by a small rural district like NS?
Okay, so far my vision is like any vision. It's a little bit idealistic, but later on it has to be filled in with practicality. The idealism part of it is a long-term goal, which means we maintain the excellence in education, which we now possess. And we possess that because there are a large offering of activities and courses, core courses at either end of the spectrum. I think we have to consider that in a long-term goal, that's important because it reaches every child, gives them an opportunity to perhaps reach their potential. We also probably in a long-term goal have to look at the idea of bringing in more trade classes simply because that's where everything is going now with AI at the white collar. So I think that's part of my vision. In practicality then, short-term goals are everything that we're probably doing right now to make sure we ensure that. We will have to probably enhance more offerings, keep checking and targeting, you know, going after probably tracking, I should say, tracking our academic level so that it remains the same. These are all part of it. And part of that was challenges, correct? So part of the challenges in a small system are being able to offer more simply because we have a smaller student body, so we have fewer teachers. And then that means that the offerings are kind of shorter. Also, one of the challenges that a lot of small districts have, we really, I don't think, notice so much because we are able to, within our own community, offset some of those. For example, the course offerings, we do have for the upper end, we do have dual credit classes. And down at the lower end, we, I shouldn't say lower end, those who are more specific towards skills, we have a lot of practical skill classes offered. So we're already addressing some of those, I would say, challenges. And the last challenge I will talk to them just quickly would be financial assistance from community, which oftentimes in smaller communities is a problem. And here again, we have a very generous community for scholarships or other items that need. I think my time is up, so.
Justin.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Marilyn said. I have slightly different thoughts on it though, as I usually do. The, I think NS has a lot of resources to offer. We're a small town, but there's a wealthy part of our district. There's a lot of retirees that live here and other things. And I think we do have a lot of fiscal resources to bear for the amount of people that we have. I think what we have to do to get to, again, one of the things that Marilyn just talked about is like some long-term growth, being able to offer a lot of different programs, whether it's academically, sports, usually whatever the case may be. I think we have to get to a current state where we are fiscally stable. Right now, it's kind of a year-over-year battle. So some people are doing great things, like Ginger and the board are making sure that the teacher bills or the teacher budget and compensation budget is being paid every year. Trying to put some headroom in there to cover those things. But it's still a fight to fight every year. And that's not necessarily going to change. But I think we can start planning a little bit more long-term to get to a place where we're stable first. After that, then we can start looking at some of those growth things, right? Like taking on more sports, creating more athletic classes, maybe doing some of the things that require a lot of material expenses, like tech classes and things like that. So I'm very cognizant of not spreading the district too thin fiscally. Where, you know, right now, we do have a lot of sports programs for, you know, the students that have, that's not to say the wrestling or softball or whatever. Those are bad things. I think they're a great thing. I'm a huge sports guy. I love playing with sports. But we also need to be careful, like in my mind, I think we need to focus on teaching the classroom first. And then how do we come off of that? And that needs to be a conscious decision, not something that we approach one meeting at a time, right? Like where do we want to end up? Are you familiar?
Right, so I think one of the most critical institutions in our community is the school. And I think that because we need to have parents who work in our businesses, own businesses, and all that to support our community. And if our school isn't, you know, well-funded and operating to a high level that parents want to be here, then that's going to affect the support to our community. My vision is one that allows us to continue to provide high-quality education while supporting growth, teacher retention, and adequately funding the school. I think one of the unique challenges for our community is the fact that we have about 40% of the tax base is retirees on fixed incomes. So having surprise levies is not something that we want to continue to do. And how we can avoid that is kind of like what Justin is saying, having some long-term strategy and plan so we can have measured ways to address growth, funding, and to ensure that our school continues to be a high achiever.
Thank you. I'll start with Peter. How do you plan to support and retain quality teachers and staff while ensuring competitive salaries and professional development opportunities?
Well, I think the STARS Act that was just passed is going to go a long way in supporting our teachers. Again, teachers are consistently underpaid. But this act is going to increase the base salary to around $41,000 from, I think, I believe it was 36. So, and then there are additional incentives in there for longevity. I believe the school district has already negotiated a contract that provides a 2% pay increase every year for all students, and then every fourth year they get another 4%. And then we have some longevity payments as well for those that are here for 10 or 20 years. And then on the professional development side, the STARS Act also provides incentives for additional college education or certain patients that will enhance their pay in addition to, if someone gets a master's degree, for example, they get additional bonus. So I think all of that is going in the right direction to support teacher pay.
And Justin?
Sure. I agree with a lot of what Peter said there. One thing that I would add is I think there is some room to look at the teacher contract and provide a little bit more structure in there with some questions and some things that came up recently. And I think, actually Amanda may be disappointed with one of the board meetings months ago. But I don't know, I look at my job in the commercial world. It's the way that my retirement plan is structured, the way that I leave a company or whatever is all pretty well-laid out and articulated. You know what your fees are if you cash out of a retirement fund early, things like that. I think there's some room in our teacher contract, maybe structure that a little bit more clearly so that when things like buyouts at the end of your career come along and things like that, it's not kind of a, what are we doing this month? Again, like kind of the same thing I said last night, what are we doing this month or this year? Five years from now, 10 years from now, this is what this is going to look like. And again, that's not just something that the board decides, but I mean, obviously I'm buying into that too. But I think there's some room to start looking at those kinds of things, which gives some longevity and kind of a longer view to, hey, maybe I do want to stay at NS 20 years or another 10 years. So that, because they know what's waiting for them, I think, but on the other side of the rainbow, so it's 20. So I think that's another aspect in addition to what Peter was saying.
Okay, I'll skip everything I was going to say about the STARS Act because I think it's already. But another way we can help out our teachers, in fact, all of our staff, which means maintenance and transportation, et cetera, we have been working on for the past several years. And that's providing housing for them because we all realize the cost of living in this particular environment right now in this community. And so providing housing, we have eight units right now, providing that housing helps bring someone in, helps keep someone here for a while. They are allowed to live in housing for, in either of any of the units for five years at a time. And the rent is much, much less than it would be if they were trying to find rental situations in other places. So housing is another way. I think another way to help the teachers is to do exactly what we've been doing classroom size-wise. Try to keep our classroom size below what the state levels are. So one-on-one teaching is so much more effective. It's very helpful to the teachers, it's very productive, and much better for the students too. And I think that's another clear way that we can keep helping the teachers out. For professional development, it's been opened up instead of just using the October state-led workshop days. Teachers can do workshops that maybe are more pertinent to their particular field or their grade level in the summertime and use those instead for that teacher development. They're also, the school is also very good about professional. Me during this school year, I know one individual just took one day, for a two-day workshop last week for grant writing, came back extremely excited about it because there are even smaller grants, like $250 or $500 grants for individual classrooms. And there's a lot of money available out there and already has a couple other staff members on board to help. So the school is very cognizant of professional development, I think.
Thank you. Peter, what role do you believe parents in the community should play in school decision-making? And how would you encourage greater transparency and communication?
Well, I think there's four stakeholders in any school district, and that's the students, parents, district staff, and the community. I believe the board members have responsibility to inform the public and be that conduit between the public and the school. And that includes parents. So being available to ask questions or feed any, intake any concerns from the public is important, I think, for the board to do. And personally, I would commit to having regular hours each month at the library or someplace where community members can come and ask me questions. I can take any concerns that help guide the decision-making on the board, which it does have. Another idea is publishing our minutes more. I know it's on the website, but a lot of people in the community know where to look. The school I grew up in, they put the board minutes in the paper. I think that's something we could look at. Also, posting post-it on the social media would also increase the communication.
Thank you. I think, again, I agree with a lot of what Peter said. I think the community has, the parents and the community both have a large role, obviously, in school, right? The community benefits from the school, like I look at it kind of as a system. Students come in, you know, the school educates them, and then kind of on the way out, they put that back in, the community is well-educated, well-rounded young adults. And that cycle continues to perpetuate itself over time. So it's in that system, the community is getting out of the school what it puts in with. You know, another big aspect of that is mine, right? So one of the stats I was quoted earlier, I think, with Peter was like, 40% of the community is retirement age. They, you know, I want to get to a point, if they don't feel that way already, particularly retirees, that we have moved it to the area as opposed to the ones that have been here over time, that they feel that bind so that when we do go ask for a levy or something like that, they understand kind of how that sustains itself within the community. As far as communication, I think like one thing, sorry Amanda, I'll go with you again. Like the Friends of NS Schools, that's been stood up, I think that was a great, that's a great thing, right? Like, we need to consistently communicate, not just to parents or grandparents who have children in school, but the other community members, that is not just, you know, a Facebook post or whatever. Friends of NS Schools is like, you know, doing a lot of proactive communications with the entire community because at the end of the day, right, they all vote on the levy. They're paying that bill that we're asking them to do, if it passes, and if it does. If you can vote for it, please do. But that kind of communication that is consistent and not just limited to people that are directly involved with the school is a wonderful thing. So I strongly encourage that. And if we can even expand that more, then that's something we should definitely look at doing going forward.
I also believe that parents and community are vital to the school. And oftentimes, a lot of our decisions are group decisions. We have committees that are partially community members, parents, students, staff, administration. And all of that works well together because in a smaller community, in a smaller district, everyone is so closely connected. And the school and community are, and work as one so often. So that works together. And I also do believe, and I think it's probably proven, so I believe in parental rights. I think that they need to know what's going on in the school system. And I think we're very open about that. We have open board meetings, we are videoed at our board meetings. We also have an open door policy. I think that should be highlighted. All you have to do is call the school and make an appointment with one of the principals or the superintendent, and they welcome you to come in with questions. I know a lot of people don't do that. And so Friends of the School, again, headed by Amanda, and there are a lot of people working with that. And we thank all of you. I know she spends hours at the school, either with the clerk or with the superintendent, getting facts down. And for some reason, I think it's kind of like a parent-child relationship. Children don't necessarily get their answers from mom or dad. If somebody else tells them, it works better. And I often feel this is what it is with the board and the superintendent. Somebody from the community, maybe they're more willing to say, well, that's bad, we believe that. And it is not that we have anything to get, it isn't that we're hiding anything. It's that I just think sometimes it works better to get that communication coming from what happened in the public. And I, again, we thank all of you for doing that because it has been tremendous.
Justin, how would you differentiate the role between an elected school board member versus the superintendent and principals regarding day-to-day operations and long-term strategic planning?
Yeah, to me, there's a pretty clear line there. I mean, I think the administration is going to be the first line for the day-to-day activities. The principals, superintendent, they're going to front that stuff. I go back to last year when I ran, there was a very clear line of like, you know, if there's a student, a problem in the classroom, the parents first recourse. If a parent's involved, it should be the teacher, you know, go on up the chain to principals, superintendent. Only if you get to a point where a day-to-day activity cannot be solved at those levels or there's a broader implication for the strategy of the overall school or it's going to affect the school, the district broadly, then it should be brought to the board. I think the board has a lot of responsibility, not sole, but a lot of, the majority of responsibility is to be playing, there's going to be a lot of input from the administrative staff into that. But I think that the board has the majority of responsibility.
Yes, okay. We are as board limited, I mean, we have a governing body too. It's the Montana School Board Association. And so our rights, our rules, our responsibilities, it's not what we think we should be doing. It's what they tell us we should be doing. And two of the keys there are policy, which means that we help with forming policy if necessary, and we approve policy, we give some input. And then the other one, of course, is with approving the budget. And again, we don't figure out the budget. We have access to input, but the budget is formulated by the clerk and by the superintendent. The School Board Association from Montana, the legal part of it, has an expression they use quite often when they refer to the day-to-day. And that is that school boards govern at 10,000 feet. Superintendent governs on the ground, and then the principals. And that's very much what you were referring to, and that's how it's laid out for us. We're not a helicopter parent, okay? Trying to think of something we might be able to allude to there. We are a board that has specific, and it is, when you're in a public election or when you've been elected to a public office, there's a public trust to follow. You know, we have to work in good faith. And what does good faith mean? Well, it means that we need to be loyal, we need to have integrity. We probably need to come to big decisions with a lot of caution. There are certain, and impartiality, there are a lot of little things that go along with that. And I think that is key, that each one of us remembers that. We are a positive force for the school, not a force that should be putting out negative information. I think if we have something that we need to appeal to the superintendent or to the principals about, then we come in and do that, and we work through that process. But I think we are considered the public, the public positive force for the school.
I believe the role of the school board is to oversee the finances in addition to policy. I mentioned, and also to supervise the superintendent and be a conduit between the school and the community. I think that's a big role for the board. And to help inform the public in addition to Friends of NS Schools, but also take intake feedback. I think that when community members or parents comes to a board member to try and solve a problem, the board member should ask if they're the teacher first or the lowest level first. The board members, I think, should be the last ones involved. And that goes into as far as day-to-day operations, I don't think that works well. Superintendent, principals are should be managing the school. And then in terms of strategic planning, similar to what Justin said, but I think it's definitely a board-level committee. But we should have input from the four stakeholders that I mentioned previously, students, parents, teachers, and staff, as well as community representatives who are developing some kind of district-level strategic plan that's going to go over a number of years. All those people should have a voice and inform that document.
Lynn, could I interrupt just a second? Could we go back, we skipped number three? No, I was in the photo. Sorry. Honey, I was just testing. So Marilyn. What steps will you take to improve student achievement and ensure that all students, regardless of background, have access to high-quality education?
And before we talk about improvement, I would like to just throw a couple of items out there. Our graduation rate for the last two years has been 100%. During COVID, it went down a little bit, but we're always in the high ranges. We have an excellent school system, and I think that graduation rate shows it. And another stat that goes along with that is that from 20, I think you did 20 to 24, we've had 80% of those students go on to some form of higher education. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean a four-year college. It might mean a community college, it might be a military or apprenticeship of some sort. But it's where we're able to track that because it's where a transcript has had to be sent. And so I think that's a very good statistic also. I think that we can improve, we always look for improvement, that's for sure. And one of the ways we can do that is, and one of the ways I think that we are doing it because you mentioned for all students. So again, we look at not just the upper end, but those who are down at the other end. And our springtime hybrid schedule allows teachers to come in, and many of them do, on Friday morning to work with students who need extra help. They'll come in, and when you're sitting in front of an entire class, sometimes that's very difficult because you're teaching everybody. You may be able to give them a certain amount of time, but you can't give them all the time anymore. And that improves that end, it brings that end down, and those kids are just as important as any other one. We do have our special needs because we got the special ed program. We have a Title I program where if kids need help for, because let's say an accident for certain circumstances, they can use that too. So I think we're looking at all of those and helping. We have aids in all of those programs, aids that can come into a big classroom also. The problem is with funding, sometimes that's what gets cut, some of those aids. But that's one way we can keep improving all of these scores also. I think one other point is keeping the classes small because there's better one-on-one teaching and the students all profit from that.
I believe all students should have access to high-quality education. With that said, and education's not just in the classroom. So one of the things, one of my ideas and something I'd like to explore or support is to set up some kind of work-study or internship program with some of the local businesses. We have a lot of careers and types of businesses in this community, which is really unique, to a smaller town. And I think there's a lot of opportunity that we can help students that are maybe 11th or 12th grade, getting ready to enter the workforce or go on to higher education, to have an opportunity to see, well, what are the other, what career fields are there out there that they may want to explore or be interested in? And I think we can leverage the community and help support them. I have talked to some business owners around about this idea, and they have been pretty receptive. So that is something I'd like to see.
I agree a lot with what everyone already said, and I will reiterate what Marilyn said is, I think the school is actually in a really good spot in terms of education and making that education equitable across the board regardless of the student's work or family situation. So I think we're at a really good spot. So I think we're at a really good spot when it comes to improving. And there's a sports program or something else. Those are hard decisions, and there's no right answer. But I think the classroom has to be at the center of that decision, and as long as we're asking the right questions towards that end, I think that's how you continue to improve.
So I'll start with you, Justin.
I was wondering, one of my terms. Peter has all those signs up, so he's not taking anything.
With the district operating on a hybrid five-day week in the first semester, and a four-day week in the second semester, how do you believe this impacts student learning, teacher retention, and operational costs? And would you support maintaining or changing the schedule?
So I did a lot of research on this one, because I'm one of those guys that likes to like look at studies and find numbers where I can. You know, there's a lot of points here. I think like, you know, most districts reported saving 1% to 2% in costs by going to a four-day schedule. Teacher retention is much higher in schools that have a four-day schedule. Education levels was kind of a mixed bag, depending on how it was implemented. It tended to actually trend down or be neutral. It didn't really go up and up. I guess the thing is, taking everything that I just said into account, is that it's what's right for the district. And even in the declining, like, the educational level studies that I looked at, the programs that were successful in a four-day were ones that, it wasn't just because it was four days. It was contact time in the classroom with students. It was, are you using the time, is it structured well? Is it like all these other things? Some districts did it great, others did it terribly. Some were somewhere in the middle, and the takeaway that I took from that was it all kind of depends. So, coming back to the board and inputs from administration, teachers, and families, all of those things come into play, and I think this balance that we have right now is good. Like, I don't think, I think it gives a little bit of both, and you get to realize some of the benefits of teacher retention. But, you know, there, it can still be a drawback on the first half. And I honestly do think that elementary students probably would be better off with more time in the classroom. And, you know, maybe middle school and high school, they could probably be a little bit more in control of their lives and, you know, realize that Friday time off went a little bit differently. But, you know, we have practical limitations to consider, and I think a four or five balance that we have right now, five-four balance, whatever you would call it, is a good starting spot. It's something I'd like to contribute to.
I like what you said for the most part, and I would like to kind of quote our principal, Brian Hilton, from the lower end. Our hybrid is becoming a model for the rest of the state. It is working so well that, and I feel the retention is part of it. Now, I know we really haven't had a chance to say that about retention, except that we have heard from a lot of teachers when they thought maybe the hybrid was on the line, that they might start looking elsewhere if that were the case. So I guess retention is part of it. I think that, and I did, I'm gonna address some other things, but I looked down just briefly. The OPI's smarter assessment for 2023, and we have ours for 2024, but I don't have the state. This compares Enos against the state, and in the ELA, which is the English part of it, we were at 56%, the state was at 38%. We went up in 2024 to 69, 65% for the ELA. The math for Enos was at 55% in 2023, and the state at 45%, and we came up to 59%. So we see growth. So what I say is that it's still young yet, you know? You have to assess every year, but at this point, the balance looks good. And I did go in and get a bunch of information, but sometimes too much is too much. So I just brought one sheet that compares us, it's the entire K through 12 district report card, and it shows the district compared to state, and it has graph lines so you can see where we're falling in all of that recently. And I think sometimes, again, showing is better than telling, and so that's why I want that one. Just so we understand that, I, we have not regressed, and again, it has to be assessed every year. We do understand that. And I prefer to think of what is, in other words, what is working for us? And when they did the, you know, the poll of the teachers, the survey, where the parents, where the teachers, where the students, they're largely in favor of what we're doing. And I think they're the people in the trenches. They're the people we need to listen to. It's what works for us. It's not the what-ifs. There are what-ifs in every situation. So when the what-ifs get there, then you address the what-ifs. But right now, it's what is working, what is working, and I think it looks good at this point. I would like to say that, you know, some of the larger studies that have been done also have some inaccuracies in them. For example, when we had one that came out that showed an average of $200 more. Can I say just one brief little thing? We are going to try and put a roof on the building this spring. That has nothing to do with four-day or five-day.
I'm a proponent of the hybrid model. I think it's it's a good compromise between the different factions, somewhat 5-day, somewhat 4-day. And like Marilyn mentioned, the surveys came back, and everyone likes the majority of parents supporting the four-day. Personally, I do as well. But I do think that our decisions, our schedules should be tied to the test and how our kids are performing, like she said, like Marilyn said. We're early on in this, in this experiment on our schedule, and we just need to.
What's the new?
But if the community, especially the parents and teachers, and the kids, we'll just continue. I think there are some additional benefits that we've mentioned, where it's just, meaning students are more refreshed, you know, when they have a four-day, and teachers as well, with that additional day of rest. I'm not sure about operational costs. We're really saying not much with the school kind of shut down an extra day, maybe there's some situations there. But yeah, like I said, I'm a pro.
Thank you. Are there any questions that anybody in attendance would like to ask?
We have a silent majority here.
Is there anything, how about if you reach with a closing comment on something you would like to share that you have?
Well, I'll start, I guess. And thank you for allowing us to do this. And again, thank you to the friends of the school because you've been a great asset. I would, I guess, just like to say that having taught for 40-plus years and having taught in this school system for 29, I will say that it is the best school system I have taught in. And so I just think it's neat to know that because I feel that I have fairly high standards, and those standards are being met once in a while.
Yeah, two things. One, like I said, I think the school is in a great spot to start, at least from an academic perspective, so that's first and foremost on my mind. When it gets to money, I know there's been a recent change with the SB 260 that's out there. Or, it's pending, it's been amended, right? Or, not as a pass of meaning yet, but don't get lulled asleep. All that does is give you more runway to, or more rope to hang yourself with, I guess, depending on what analogy you want to use. But, you know, if that moves everything out nine years, or whatever the length was, I think it was nine years. So I'll have to figure that stuff out, because the day is going to come. So better to do it with one hand on the wheel and do it proactively.
Just to reiterate, Marilyn, I think our school does do a really good job. We have a lot of opportunities that, I came from a rural school district. I didn't have a lot of the things that my kids are able to do here. So, and as well as the small class size, I really like that, so we want to maintain that. The concerns for me are just our planning aspect and the future. So we've had a 27% growth in student, the student body over the last 10 years. If that continues, we're gonna have another 100-plus kids. What are we gonna do? This facility's not gonna be able to support that many more students. So we need to have a long-term strategic plan that addresses that. Also, we don't want to surprise our constituents with lettuces. So the communication piece is important. If we have big maintenance needs in the future, we need to make sure we're communicating that with the public. So I think that goes back to the board members playing a role in supporting that communication. Thanks.
And if I could, I just might add to that, when we talk about this levy that's going out right now, it actually, you know, it's probably been a long-term process, but there were other needs in place, I think, is what happened along the way, for years and years and years. And when we brought this group in, McKinstry, to do an in-depth study, that's when we were notified of how bad so many things were. And so that just, it's a surprise because that in-depth study was just done, but not really a surprise. I think it's like an older home, you know, eventually, things are, I know we've had, maybe I'm talking too much. I have one more thing I want to say. Because I know one of the questions out there was about, yes, things were going bad, then why, a couple years ago, did we buy another bus? And I, and this bus is for transportation for extracurriculars. And just so everyone is aware of it, of course, everybody knows we have different buckets that everything goes.
I don't think everyone does know that, to be honest.
So monies have to stay in certain buckets, and that's the way it is. But at any rate, it's a safety issue. Just a week ago, we had some students coming from the other side of Missoula. It's a combination of a softball team called Matt, and they broke down at Cardwell. And before Brian could get our bus and get going for them, what happened? The parents came by, and they put the kids in the parents' cars, and they brought them on up. Now, I know it was the fastest remedy, but it could have also been the fastest liability. And so safety is an issue with buses. And when old buses, I was on a speech trauma and date bus one time in the middle of the winter going to Dillon, and we broke down, and we had to sit there and wait. So it is a matter of safety. I think, you know, sometimes we don't consider, there are different aspects that dictate when certain things have to be purchased.
Speaking of safety, Lynn, did you want to transition to the little Q and A?
Yes.
Is that a good time to do that? Okay. I want to take a chat for a little bit. I also think you chat for a little bit.
Any other questions? Anywhere the people want to go?
Yeah.
Howard, you got any? Yeah, here we go.
Grants. There's a lot of money out there for, that's a lot of grants. And I'm on a board where I get to see where you can apply for that. And it's amazing to me that the number of school boards that don't even apply. And I know they can use the money. There's no doubt in my mind. But a lot of them just, I don't know what happens. They don't want to fill out the grant application, or they don't, I'm ninety-nine percent sure they know what.
Well, and that's what, so what about, so at the senior center, we did a grant. John Heckler wrote it up. It took him months and months and months, and I don't know how much hard work. But we ended up getting the grant, but we turned it down, the building.
Because it would have cost us more than double what it cost us to do this.
Yeah.
And it would have taken, like, years, and we did it in months, yeah.
I'm not talking about those grants.
So it depends on what kind of grant. We did get a grant, though, from the Lyons International Foundation that matched, which was, um...
We have to be careful about grants.
Actually, if I could interrupt, I would like to, Howard, I'd like to have Tanya address you because she has Massa Valley Muscle Foundation, so she has more experience with grants, and she is co-chairing her committee, so I think she does a great job of this one.
You know, I, I know Harrison School got a grant.
Yeah.
And the grant was like four thousand bucks, this number of years ago. Yeah. Another company matched it. So they end up getting eight thousand bucks. And what they did is, they gave that school eight thousand dollars. With the understanding is, give to the superintendent, administration, teachers, here's eight thousand dollars. It's up to you how to spend it wisely. And they, it took them, I guess, six months, but I did see the results on paper. And they spent it wisely. They got a deal with Dell. They went out here and wheeled the deal. And they, they got a lot of stuff for that money, which was great.
Yeah. Grants can be a bit of a black hole. They're all structured differently. They all have different timelines, different requirements. For, I would say, the infrastructure needs that our school has and the timeline of how fast and how urgent they need the money, there isn't a grant that's going to do a significant, take a significant financial portion of that off of the plate. So unfortunately, from my perspective, I don't think, a grant right now, if you want to focus on grants, you're going to be looking at what you need three years from now, not what we need in the next two years, and that's the unfortunate part. But it is a portion of the mix that we do need to be focused on for the future.
How about technology, Grant? I know it takes time, but it doesn't take three years.
Not for technology. I'm thinking infrastructure.
I think of technology.
That's, and that, yeah.
We're talking Atlas North.
A different, a different portion of the galaxy here, the grant galaxy.
Right. Talking Atlas North.
Yes. Um, there are ones out there, and I'm sure we could do it. They all have strings attached. Technology has been our focus for the, this building reserve levy. But I think you have a strong point that we do need to be looking at grants, that the school could potentially partner with a grant writer, who is, who knows where buckets of money are, especially tailored for schools. I'm not proficient in that, because that's a whole nother part. But I think that it is an area that our school needs to grow into. It is something that I think we are well-positioned to request money.
They are out there. I know they are.
And just from perspective, Tanya, Howard was on the Three Rivers Board for many years, which is why he's so immersed in tech funds.
Yes, yes.
I know Three Rivers does a lot of grants.
They do, right.
And they go to, uh, you, our loan companies, and they'll match it. So if they were to give five, the loan company matches, so you end up with ten, if you're the top where of, of the application.
Yeah. Matching grants are great. I think we need to define, we need to define what our needs are. That's step one, is defining what our needs are and the timeline of those needs. And then we can search for the grants that fit that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because technologically, we're in regic shade. Yeah, we have the new, yeah, yeah, yeah. So not like a top priority.
But technology changes rapidly.
It is. That's one of the most expensive things ever, because it does change so rapidly. And everything about it changes, not just the expense. But, you're right. But I think grants are a phase two for our, you know, committee focus, like Amanda was talking about. We are very passionate. I don't think we're going anywhere.
No. Sorry, Jerry. You just kind of opened up a can of worms.
I just, you just brought it up, you know?
It's a very fair point to bring up.
And same with, same with teachers applying. You just got awarded here, and a teacher for a thousand bucks. I don't know if you know that. Yeah, I did. I was probably inside.
From the Three Rivers? That's amazing.
Yes, very information.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. And they just like three different stages in there.
Uh-huh.
And it's amazing to sit down and hear reports, and that the number of people that don't even take the time to apply.
Yeah, and well, and I think that's, that's the key. It takes time, and it takes knowledge and the information gathering. I mean, it sounds like John had quite the undertaking to do the grant that was successful. It does take time. That's, um...
I fully agree.
It, but, and the staff time to do.
And money.
Yeah, and money to, to hire it out of.
For the teachers, it's up to them to do.
And am I wrong in saying that this is kind of uncharted territory for any school? Because we always have money. We've never had to work so hard at talking people into supporting the school. I mean, I know that people from my generation are, we never, they never had to pay for meals for them. We never had to pay for a meal on any of their trips. We never had to pay for anything. The school had the money and was able to, I mean, I don't know what's changed besides COVID and those bond failures. I, I don't know for sure. But I know that, you know, people in our groups are like, well, with everything, there's, you know, consequences, right? How do you spend your general fund money? Um, again, neither good or bad or positive or negative. It's what it is. And then we invest more money in something, like, you know, what, hasn't been two years now that we really fought for some teacher rates? It's great. It's general fund. Um, so you're going to have pros and cons on both sides, right? And the money also can come from the state, which is frustrating. So.
The money, the money coming in from the state has not focused with the expenses, salaries, or anything like that. So it's like, kind of went up this trajectory. As far as what the state was giving us, and what the expenses, the salaries, and what it costs around your building, you've gone this way. The state has not kept up at all. That gap has grown significantly in the last twenty years.
Yeah, that's great. Would be a good one to get out to. I mean, regardless of the election, I think that's just really good information to share. And what other questions do we have? I know we're getting close to lunch hour. Um, I guess one thing I'll finish on, and it's something I hate to finish on, but I do want to bring up. You know, I always tell my kids, there's consequences for their behavior. Like, if he doesn't unload the dishwasher when he comes home, like, there's going to be no screen time the rest of the day, right? Everything in life has consequences. There, there are consequences to not passing the levy. And it's nothing we want to talk about, but we want to be open about. Um, so there are consequences. We do have to come up with a loan payment because the roof has to be replaced this summer. You cannot replace the roof when the kids are in school. So it has to be redone this summer, which means we have to take out a loan to get the roof done. So if the levy doesn't pass, we do have to have a way to come up with that loan payment. Coming up with that loan payment only addresses the roof. It doesn't address anything else from these phase one and two, three needs. So you are still at risk for disruption to the school, disruption to learning, or complete shutdown, where kids are going to have to go remote learning. And to me, that's my biggest concern, is how my kids are. Very cash about education. So to me, that's the biggest detriment. I mean, there would be cuts that would have to be talked about, and none of that would be decided. But just to make sure that that is out there and known. Any other questions? Lynn, you got anything, or you want to drop off her?
No, I, I think this was good. I'm glad people came. Maybe next time we can get to more coming. Um, we're really interested in partnering with the school as well. Uh, the fifth grade classes came on two different days at lunchtime and read poems. And they had pictures with their poems.